Tycon Rogers Central District, excuse me. Tycon Rogers Central School District for February 26, 2013. I have a call to order, please. Emergency evacuation instructions, Mr. McDonald. Back and on both sides. Please rise to the place of ease.
For the reasons to apply in the United States of America, to the Republic of Washington, when nation under God, universal, the liberty of justice for all.
Again, welcome. And we do ask, or I ask, that you keep all our servicemen and women in your thoughts on a day-to-day basis as they're in this country and around the globe, and keep them safe. So we ask for your consideration on that, please. So we're going to start here with Recommended Actions Four. And before I do that, I just want to let you know that you'll notice on the left corner of the side table that there were no agendas. So we're trying to get more paperless going forward. Fortunately, Mrs. Cossey said I didn't have the turn on this to read, so there is one copy here. Also, there is a copy on our website. And if anyone would like a copy on a periodic basis, if you wouldn't mind sending Mrs. Cossey your email address, she'd be happy to email you a copy prior to the meeting. She does that for all the board members, and we just add you to the distribution. And you'd be happy to make sure that you have your own, both soft and if you'd like paper copy for the board meetings. Thank you, Mrs. Cossey. Okay, now we'll go forward with Recommended Actions. A, appointment of the district clerk pro tem. One recommended motion that the Board of Education approved the appointment of Lori Cossey. Do act as the district clerk pro tem for this meeting on Tuesday, February 26, 2013. Need a motion on that, please?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Now we'll go to five, public participation. Cell phones to National Honor Society students. And we have an enclosure on that. Do you have a presentation?
Just to give some background information, Mr. Berkhimer may be aware that students had approached him about a concept regarding cell phones. Currently, we have a policy, cell phones are not to be used in the district by staff or students except for staff when they are not in their classroom, when they're not teaching, or not for personal reasons. And students, obviously, applied that policy. They can bring them to school, but they're not allowed to use them in the building. Mr. Berkhimer mentioned that he had a group of young students that wanted to discuss this policy first with him. He directed them to come to me, and they were very appropriate. I was very proud of the presentation that they made to me. But I did make aware that this is the board policy, not so much the district building policy. And I suggested that they approach the board, and they have sent you guys a proposal. They're here to make a presentation on that proposal. And I don't know who I'm going to interview, Mr. Riley, or if you're starting to talk. Members, the rest of your team, and Lori, yours.
All right. Your question, Mr. Wood, is going to be the same. All right, so we're talking about cell phones being in school. And as you know, most cell phones don't end up like that anymore. Often, they're better than this. And as Mr. McDonald just covered, the current cell phone policy is for students, is that in their building, they must be off and out of the way. And these are three statistics from Wood College. The University of Michigan, those are the others. And the first number there is the percentage of students who say they have received messages at schools that allow cell phones. The second number is at schools like ours who say they use cell phones. You can have one hand, this cell phone's available. It's the percentage of students who say they've received messages. The third number is at campuses where cell phones are free to use. So we thought that was crucial. And when we came to you with our proposal, you asked us a question, and that was, what would we be contacting? We were like, well, that's a kind of odd question. So we thought we covered what we actually do. Very rarely ever calling people. We don't really think of many more as less as phones and more as computers as we're calling. So do you send messages, inform their consumers if something's available? And then, videos and everything to...
Well, in our school, we had the computer lab, the library, and in some cases, we had Chromebooks, which are just laptops that we have with access. Editioned. And unfortunately, the computer lab is usually booked throughout the entire day, throughout the entire week. As soon as the list is put up, there's always the check in. And when Mr. McDonough's room locks both doors, there's no access to the computer lab. And the Chromebooks, which are in English classes, can't be accessed anywhere. So we have various computers that we need to use.
And there's certainly a weird disadvantage of using cell phones in schools. Like, definitely, the fear of cheating and several things. But compare our actions like texting to other students, but that's why we came up with this proposal.
It's all about you. The, our proposal is that only senior members that are in NHS in good standing, which is as long as they have the pass, which means A to higher or above in every class, and to attend your NHS meeting, whether it be service hours, up to standards. And it would be located away from other students. And first, our idea was in the NHS hallway over the chairs on the next to outdoor. So Mr. Berkhimer says that he'd rather have it away from the greater student population. And we have come up with a location, the second half of the library and the third floor, with the old guidance offices. There's a very limited amount of people that walk through that side of the library. There's always a teacher monitoring that area. And we have a list of rules that would be posted in that area that every member would have to follow. Only senior NHS members texting or calling students in classes are limited at any time. And if there is one problem at all, any complaint by any teacher, the whole thing shut down immediately. That was Mr. McDonald's idea.
If he has students on office on, do you use this?
All right, any questions to the students? Anyone? Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate you putting that in with us more and bringing it into our attention. We'll discuss it, and before we end, we will be able to review the work itself, as we, Mr. McDonald, will have lots of resources already stocked for you. We'll hopefully, thank you again for coming.
I remember the outcome. I've got to tell you how proud I am of the way you conduct yourselves and follow proper channels. You prepare a presentation that you gave to the board ahead of time, that they were able to look at before you made your presentation. Very innovative, because if you cell phone before the presentation, I like that. I'm sorry, I have a connection that you guys made.
We found it.
No. Obviously, very well addressed, and I think that's such a good message in terms of the presentation and how effective it is when you prepare. And I think you learned, very least, a good lesson in civics and through your participation in government. Because this is really what you're doing. So my congratulations to all of you for this time, your effort, and how you went about this procedure. Nice job.
This is their place. They can be in your book from the school board.
Thanks.
There you go. Okay, so we're going to go on with the budget workshop, budget discussion, Mr. McDonald.
For the, I begin, once again, this is a starting point. And that's where we are right now. In fact, some of the information that you're seeing, we just received really last week, based on information, some from the state, in terms of tax cap and some other things. So we have a long ways to go. And we've got some challenges ahead, as we have in past years. But I can't stress enough that this is a starting point. It's the same process that we've used in years past. But I'm actually going to present some information that I want you to think about. And there's some talking points in here that I would like you to take from this meeting to either communicate with the community, but probably more importantly, your representatives in New York State. Because those, these talking points, to me, are what could resolve our budgetary issues going forward. So here's the agenda. We'll go over the timeline as we have. We'll talk about where we are in terms of updates, the realities of the budget, some nuances in there, pensions, insurance, et cetera. I'll talk about the talking points, and then we'll get into some next steps. You've seen similar timelines. Obviously, the process was started before this evening. We did have a budget advisory meeting in January. We're meeting this evening, and those outline the meetings that are upcoming, including an April 16 meeting in Haiti. But one thing I would like to talk about, if you see November, February, state audit, we just went through our second state audit. As part of the five-point plan when you had the corruption down in Long Island School Districts, and the state decided to audit every district. We went through it about four or five years ago, and we were targeted to do that this year. It's put us behind in some of our budget work because we basically had to spend time with an auditor in our district every day from November through just last week. When I had the exit meeting with the auditor, he said, "Well, the reason we chose Tycon Rogers is because, based on your state documents, your ST3s that you've been submitting, you guys are in fiscal crisis." And I said, "No kidding? I'm not surprised you're here. In fact, thank you for coming." But you need to understand that we've been playing by the rules. We've never kept over 4% fund balance. We've had major concessions from our staff. We've negotiated health insurance that are cheaper than our neighbors. We've got 15% reduction on our workforce. You tell me what else we were supposed to do. The other thing he left me with, which I think is significant, is he said that you guys are 98% accurate on your spending plan, which I think says a lot for how the business office operates, that you're 98% on target. But then he said, "But you didn't put any padding in." And my point to mention that to you is, we're getting mixed messages from the state. Don't go over 4% on your fund balance. But how come you didn't go over 4%? And then you wouldn't be in this trouble? Be as accurate as you can in terms of your expenditure and your spending plan, and how you're looking at that. But by the way, you didn't put any padding into your budget. So this is a frustrating process that we've been going through, and I want to share that with you. And I take that in terms of the message, part of the messages coming out of this meeting. The other thing I want to talk about, which is a little different, is give you ideas of some of the programs. And you're going to see more of this in the budget discussions going forward. Some more details about each of the three buildings, where we stand with our test scores. But I just wanted to give you a general idea about what's happening and highlight a couple areas. And I'm not going to read all the, we'll go through them quickly. But you can see that in elementary school, we've been meeting at a plenty of yearly progress. We're in good standing. We've never not met at a yearly progress. We have 96% attendance rate at the elementary school. We're using two series, one in math and one in reading, that are very challenging, and I think are helping our students do very well on our state assessments. The Storytown series, we piloted it several years ago. I think our kids struggled at first because it is, does demand a little bit more from them. But my observed elementary teachers last year, most of them were lessons relating to Storytown. They felt very positive about the program and how it's addressing not only the needs of our kids, but meeting the new common core elements that are part of the new state curriculum initiative. Similar with the MyMath program that we're working on this year. It's helping us meet the common core shift at the elementary school in math. And talking to Mr. Donahue has been very positive. Two other things that we've been working on in terms of the climate in the building, and the first one is called PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Support. And these are programs working with students to improve their behavior. And talking to Mr. Donahue, the referrals at the elementary school were almost cut in half, or more than cut in half, from two years ago to last year. A big part of that is the PBIS program. We're also working very hard on responsive intervention. This is a state initiative. And basically, what it's saying is, the classroom teacher, the regular ed teacher, has to do everything they can to work with students before we're going to put them in a classified setting or classify them for special education. So we have to exhaust all our resources trying to meet the needs of kids before we look at special education. And that is a cost-saving factor because when you add special education services to students, it increases your demand for resources. That's worked very well in terms of our classification rate. Part of those efforts have been offset a little bit because there are more kids on the autistic spectrum. So even though our teachers are doing a great job with this and working hard to implement this at the regular ed level, our classification rate has increased due to the number of kids that we now service that are autistic. The middle school, as an elementary school, we've always been in good standing, always met AYP, very high attendance rate at the middle school as well. For the past three years, the middle school had been recognized by the College of AmeriStudent Foundations, a national foundation that works with hundreds of schools throughout the country, even as far as west as Hawaii, many schools in this area. We were the first school in this area to be part of this organization. And for the past three years, we've been recognized by them as a school distinction, our middle school has, on a national level. Once again, the middle school has also been involved in PBIS and RTI with very similar results. Our high school, once again, in good standing, meeting AYP. One of the things that we have, and a lot of these things may say high school, but these are district efforts. For example, we have 50% of our student body enrolled in advanced placement courses. No other district in our area has more than 40. Most are 20 to 25%. And that's because our staff, starting at the elementary school, are asking students to take one more step and are pushing students, the fence riders, from maybe taking the easy way out to taking more challenging courses, especially their senior year in high school. We also offer 11 other college courses. So we have kids coming out of here at a parent's dot the early this year, saying, "My son entered college after walking out of your high school as a sophomore," which saved them a lot of money in terms of college tuition. But it speaks to the rigor that we're offering here for our kids. And they're doing well. An example of that, every one of our fall sports teams was recognized by the state for academic distinction, which means that the average GPA of the team had to be 90% or higher. Every one of our fall sports teams met that. We've been recognized for the five years that the U.S. News Report has had the rankings of schools as a silver medal school. That means top 2% in the United States. And at the high school, PBI, RTI are also a member of our program. Some district-level things, just to make people aware of, we did meet the governor's deadline, or we actually passed our APPR plan, our professional development plan, prior to the governor's deadline. We've been working on that very constructively with our administration and our association in terms of implementing the requirements, the federal requirements of the APPR. I can tell you that it has greatly increased the amount of time it takes to observe and evaluate the staff now, from my own experience, because I'm doing the elementary school again. So, but that is a district initiative. It's gone very well, and our people are rolling their sleeves and taking it on and work hard to implement at a very high level. Another thing that I think is important to point out that we host every year with the Kiwanis, a senior citizens luncheon at Christmas time. If you haven't been up to the elementary middle school to see that take place, it is really a neat, community-wide event. All levels of our school get involved in this, from elementary kids making placemats to Christmas trees to middle school kids acting as greeters to key club and food, family consumer science students helping the Kiwanis serve the meals to our senior citizens. And we had over 200 this year attend. Always very popular event. We appreciate working with the Kiwanis on that. We've had a few initiatives this year where we try to honor our military. I'm actually going to call Mr. Donahue to talk about the flag that's hanging in the cafeteria at the elementary middle school.
We recently, we hung a flag in the elementary middle school cafeteria this year that was presented to us by the 95th Airborne in the Army. They, it was a flag that actually flew in Baghdad at Camp Victory. So now, we hung it with two pictures of the units that were at Camp Victory. And we have a third, we have a third, it's an actual certificate that says it flew, and one day it flew in Baghdad, that we were getting framed, and that'll be up there as well. But it's a really nice tribute to the...
It's a nice tribute. Our kids are seeing it every day, and they understand the sacrifices that are being made. There was a tragedy in our neighboring school district in Mariah, where one of their alumni was killed this past fall. We work for the Mariah School District on an initiative to prepare gift packages and survival care packages for troops overseas. And it was, the outpouring was overwhelming. And we've also done that on an individual basis. One of our middle school classes adopted a former student who is overseas right now, and was going to have his 21st birthday in Afghanistan, and was kind of down about it. And they put together a birthday package for him. So these are all things that are happening in our school that are community-minded, that our kids are a part of, and our faculty are part of, as just examples of how we're trying to give back. I also want to talk about some innovative programs that have taken place this year. When we talked about the budget last year in terms of trying to save some costs, we were able to bring an autistic program that we were paying BOSIs about $300,000 a year for them to run that program. The kids became at a school age where they, we felt we could handle them better than BOSIs. Number one, they wouldn't be on the bus back and forth to Mindville every day. The parents really enjoyed that. We were able to staff that program with existing staff, not new hires, which allowed us to make the savings. And I've observed this classroom a couple times, and these people are working hard with these kids. And it just shows you the type of work ethic and the type of commitment that our staff has for kids. They understood, number one, this is best for kids. Number two, this is best for the district. But boy, it's going to be a lot of work to pull this off. But they're doing it, and they're doing a great job. We were hesitant about our dropout rate to high school, and we implemented an alternative high school program. We initially were going to do this without any funding. We were able to work it out where we could schedule our folks to, as part of their schedules, to run the program and got cooperation from the town to use the armory. In the meantime, however, we got a grant from ACAB to actually fund the program. So there was no cost to the district, and actually, the program has been enhanced through the grant because now we have a job coach. Because part of the program, these kids spend, actually, on a job site, working. And this keeps their interest. The board's seen the presentation from the group at the last meeting, the teachers that are part of that, and the impact that's having. And not only in terms of these kids that are buying into school better than they ever had before. I'm not saying that they're there every day, but they have certainly more commitment than they've had in the past. But number two, the impact that it's had on this building itself in terms of less distractions in some ways, I think there's a correlation there. And once again, we staff this in-house, new hires, and in a way to do something better or different without using resources. We've also started a marine technology program. We have students from Bolton and Crown Point coming here every day, every morning. That program has gone very well. We're hoping to grow that program, taking the initial success and totally expanding it. We're actually, we're receiving a little bit of revenue from BOSIs who are renting the space. But once again, another innovative program that does not cost the district or the taxpayer any money. In fact, if anything, we're getting a little bit of revenue from that. But it's also meeting the needs of employers in the area because we've heard from the marines in the area that they are willing to hire folks. They need to hire folks, and they're having trouble doing that. So this will provide employment for those kids and employees for our area businesses. Talking to Mr. Donahue, and once again, trying to go out and do innovative things, we were able to find a music appreciation grant. It was a three-day grant for folks, and we're talking high-end, classy musicians that have had a variety of professional experiences, whether it be playing at the White House or playing with Pavarotti. Where our kids spent, not only do they see performance, but they actually spend time with these people in learning and getting to appreciate what these folks do. I know the performances were outstanding. And that staff member said what a great moving experience it was. But once again, it was innovative. This cost us nothing. We went out and found it, and brought it to our kids. So we are doing everything we can to keep our program going despite the tough budgets that are happening. So getting into budgets, I always start with, how's our budget looked over the past five years? This is a five-year budget comparison. You can see that last year, we had significant decreases spending, which impacts the five-year average, and a levy increase which has been around the average. But over five years, our spending increase has been 2%, a little bit over 2%, 2.06. And our five-year levy average has been 3.7. Next thing in terms of budgeting is looking at enrollment. These projections were done by our district census, both from Tycon Rogers and Hague. It also includes Pottam and St. Mary's kids coming to either the middle school or the high school. And you can see that from this year to the next, '13, '14, it's basically staying the same, and a little bit dropped in '14, '15. So about 10 kids dropped. Our enrollment is slowed off, at least for the time being. You can see we've had quite a drop from '08 to '09, and actually, even more if you go back further. And our staffing has reflected that. We've reduced the number of sections in classrooms. But this does play a role in the budgeting process. Okay, so some specific factors that are going to impact the budget this year. I'm going to talk about a couple, and Mrs. Cossey's going to enlighten you on something as well. The first is pensions. And these are the mandatory payments we have to make to retirement systems for both of our employee groups. The percent for the teachers' retirement system this year is 16.25. That's a 37% increase from last year to this year. The other retirement system, the percent contribution is 20.9. The other retirement system, the percent contribution is 20.9, and that's 11.8% increase from last year to this year. And people say, how come with the stock market improving, are we still seeing these drastic increases? These increases are covering the deficit from years past still, so it's not a year-to-year comparison. By law, the retirement system has to be fully funded, and it is, but it is an expensive part of the education budget in any town or municipal budget. But that total dollar for those two retirement contributions is $460,000. The state has recognized, despite the spend that occurred in these payments over the past few years, there is a proposal out that we need to take a look at, in terms of our budgeting plan, in terms of leveling those, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Cossi to talk about those quickly.
I thought you were going to still have to.
No, all right.
So, just commenting quickly on the information on pension factor. So that $460,000 in total is basically the increase for this year. Now, our total expenditure budget is that much additional expenditures associated with these pension increases, which are obviously is a huge number. The proposal that's assumed, that's been presented by Governor Cuomo, is right now a proposal, and that's one of the big things that's creating some confusion. We've had lots of questions, I've attended some meetings, and nobody's really sure how this is going to play out, because it is a proposal, it's not law. But we're doing a lot of research and trying to identify some of the pros and cons of going down that road. The proposal for TRS is basically, they're calling it a smoothing, where you would be able to sign up for a fixed TRS pension contribution of 12.5%. Compared to the 16.25, it would save approximately 4% on your contribution rates. However, as Mr. McDonald said, the 16.25% is reflective of the fund performance, and the fund performance does trail how the economy has performed. So the expectation has been that over the next few years, we are expecting to see that contribution rate go down. It does vary. 11 years ago, we were contributing 0.36% compared to 16.25 now. In the eighties, it was in the mid twenties, so this rate fluctuates on a consistent basis. So some of the things that we, as business officials, are trying to identify is, with this smoothing factor, if we stay at that fixed rate, what are we going to be looking at long-term in terms of, are we assuming a huge additional liability now to save us in the current day and age? Also, if we, you know, were to take that option, are we paying for other schools? Is it going to drop to 0.36, and are we stuck at that rate? At this point, the proposal is saying it would be a 20-year fixed rate, 20 years. Again, it's a proposal, there's still a great deal of questions, but that's where we're at right now. This is strictly for TRS. ERS actually had presented a different option several years ago, where you can actually amortize your payments. So it saves you for one year, but then you're kind of catching up the next year, and you're having to pay your current year, and you have to pay interest on top of that. So many entities didn't even bother with that unless they were absolutely in dire straits. So, it is a TRS proposal. If you're reading anything about it in the media, it's getting quite a bit of mixed reviews. Some entities are looking at it as, oh my goodness, this is going to save us, we'll be able to save that much on our expenditure currently. Others are taking the flip side, looking at, if you tie yourself into this for 20 years, what's going to be the offset when the contributions are back at 0.36%? And there hasn't been any discussion if there will be adjustments. Is it 20 fixed years, and if the fund performs well, they'll lower it? What if the fund performs poorly? Are they going to raise it? And that's a possibility, too. The fund has to support itself. The fund has actually gotten very positive reviews on how it's managed by a comptroller. But these are some of the things that have been brought by Governor Cuomo, and the comptroller does have some additional questions. So again, it is a proposal, but just some information on that for your consideration.
So, if the proposal does go through, it's something we have to consider. Do we do it, given our budget situation? And you'll see why, we're going to take a look at that. The other area that I might want to comment on is health insurance. The board directors for consortium meets next week, and right now, the discussion of the proposal, which in terms of rate increases, would be a 0% increase for Plan B, and a 7% increase for Plan A. Now let me just kind of comment on that. We were the first district in the consortium of the 17 schools to negotiate all of our employees into Plan B. Plan B initially started out as a 10% savings, not savings, a 10% reduction in the premium from Plan A. The reason being is Plan B encourages the employee to be a better consumer of health insurance. It raises the out-of-pocket maximum, it raises the deductible, and creates a three-tiered prescription drug plan, so that when you go to the doctor, you have a stake in what he is offering you in terms of treatment options. So you were having the conversation of, do I need to have this top-of-the-line drug, or can I have a generic drug? If I need a top-of-the-line, I can get it, but if I can get my own generic, even better. If this proposal goes through, and I'm pretty confident it will, it'll be the third consecutive year that there's been a zero increase in the Plan B premiums. Reason being is the data has shown, our trend data on our actual insured lives, or the contracts that are out there on our employees, the Plan B people are doing a better job of being consumers of health insurance. So I think the discrepancy between Plan B and Plan A at one point was 10%, it's now almost 20%. We still have employees in Plan A, we have retired people in Plan A, so the 7% does impact Tycon and Rogan, in terms of retirees, but not our actives. And as I said, we are the only district that has all of our actives in Plan B. So, in my opinion, you can negotiate higher rate increases, or you can negotiate higher employee contributions toward health insurance, that's not going to slow the growth of the rate. The only way to slow the growth of the rate is to change the habits of the consumer, and that's what Plan B has done. So, once again, our employees have bought into that. The data has shown that they are, what we predicted in terms of, when we created the plan, when the consortium created the plan, what we predicted is actually happening, and that's why you're seeing a zero increase. Of that, our employees do pay 10% of that premium, but it's much cheaper than any of the area premiums now, even though it is a very, very good health plan. If you remember last year, there was some confusion about the rates south of us, that we were lumped into that, and if you look at those rates, they're much higher. In fact, as president of the consortium, or chair of the consortium, I've been contacted by five school districts this year, two north and three south, that want to join our consortium. And I said, you certainly can, except for you're going to have to come up with any liability exposure that every other district has, and I think that just is too much money for districts to come up with upfront. But they've seen the difference in the premiums, and they've seen how the employee has become a better user of the plan. And so I want to point that out in terms of what we're trying to do to keep, contain costs. We're not going to reduce health insurance costs, we'll certainly try to contain them. Here's our executive state aid projection. Mrs. Cossi went through this, and I think it's pretty accurate. I'll go through this line by line very quickly. The one that we're going to focus on is the bottom line, it's in red, but I'll get to that in a second. As you see, foundation aid, the first line has been frozen again, so there's zero increase in the foundation aid. You see a small increase in BOSIs aid, 12%, that is cost-driven aid based on the programs, either student programs or other shared services that we use through BOSIs. You see an increase in excess cost aid. This is money you receive for students who have very, very high services, multiple services, multiple handicapped children. And once again, that is kind of cost expense-driven. If you have a student, you're going to get the aid. The state is pushing universal pre-K, so you can see an increase there, but that is a targeted program, so that aid goes along with that expense, and that expense is not part of the line item in our budget, it's a separate category. So even though it's an increase, it's treated separately in terms of a budgetary item. Small increase in hardware, software, library, textbook, once again, that's expense-driven. These are things that, and this is money, if you don't use it, you don't get it. We're looking at a reduction in transportation aid, because we have not been purchasing buses the past couple of years. So there is no transportation aid generated from those purchases, and we're still actually losing money there. We are still getting a pretty good shot of high tax aid, which is a good thing. We'll kind of talk about that a little bit, we can see about 8%, almost 9% increase there. And then our building aid is basically flat, all our debt service is in place, we don't have any more new debt service coming, so our building aid should actually level off and then drop, because we're going to be retiring some debt in the upcoming years. The line to focus on, however, is the last line, the one that's in red, and that's the deficit reduction line, and I talked about this last year. But this is the, what the governor has done, has said, here's the 4% increase in aid, but we have to address the deficit, so we're going to take a percent or a chunk of money out of that aid as our deficit reduction. The good news is, is that the reduction is less than last year. The bad news is still almost $600,000 that we're not getting. So, when you total these things up, we're looking at, you can see 11% difference in two years. If you look at, pulling everything up, we're looking at basically about a 1.7% increase in state aid based on the executive proposal. Property tax cap is still in place for our second year, and just a reminder that if you present a budget that is within the property tax cap threshold, the 2% threshold, you just need a majority approval. If you go above the 2% threshold, you're going to have to have a supermajority or 60% approval. And this is how the tax cap looks for us this year, and I'll just walk you through this real quick. This is the, this is the information that we just found out yesterday, and I know there's some more webinars that Mrs. Cossi's going to be attending in the future, but this is what we know as of the 26th of February. You take the prior year, this year's levy, the levy that we currently have, which is just over 10.3 million. The state then puts in a growth factor, I don't know where they come up with that number, but they give it to us. This year, it's 1.0036. You then take that into account, any pilots, we do not have any pilots, these are payments to the rule of taxes, we don't have any of these going on right now. And then you take out prior year exemptions. So basically, your exemptions are your capital improvements. Capital improvements were voted on as a separate referendum, they're not, they're aided differently, and so they come out of the tax cap calculation. Yeah?
It not only takes into account your capital improvement, so any of your building projects, so taking the expenses associated with debt service, less than a building aid, they also take into account what's considered capital expenditures in your current school year. So if you are purchasing buses, that's considered a capital expense. If you're leasing a bus, it's a capital expense. And then any transportation aid that you would receive associated with those purchases. So there's actually several layers to that formula, and even some of our conversations have talked about how that number can change quite a bit as you go through the budget process, depending upon what your capital expenditures plan is. So that, your last prior year's exemption is fixed number, but you'll see when it comes up again as an add-back at the end of the formula, it is a moving target.
So that gives you an adjusted prior year levy, which would be 8.9 million. Multiply that by the 2% factor, or the tax cap 2%, that gives you the allowable growth number, which would be 9.1 million. You then add back in the pilots receivable, carryover, and we have zero in both those categories at this time. And then your current exemptions, which are your capital, which is what Mrs. Cossi just explained, and then there is an exemption for part of the pension payment that the state imposes. But it gives you an allowable limit of, and for us, it would be 10.9 million, or 6.23%. So in our case, 2% equals 6.23%, or up to 6.23% according to the formula. So, thinking about spending, and once again, it's preliminary, this is just for discussion purposes, to get things started. Based on the fact that our enrollment is flat, this would be a spending plan, basically maintaining everything that we're currently doing at this point in time. It does address some transportation issues. But we have put the bargaining agreements in place, so the salary benefits reflect all put-to-market agreements, that would be as of next year, what the contracts say of next year. There were concessions that have been made in the past, so this salary number reflects what the actual put-to-market agreements should be. The debt service is a fixed number. BOSIs, we had the BOSIs rates last week, so there's BOSIs increases. A lot of that has to do with the administrative budget of BOSIs. I'm not going to pick all this apart for you right now, because we're going to have to do a lot more work on these things. We estimate some fuel, looking at our trend data there, operations, maintenance, transportation, and that number does include trying to bring back some buses to our fleet, because we haven't purchased buses in two years. To tell you right now, if you came to a budget meeting, or the board meeting, I think September, Mr. DiGladi was here, and basically said, our routes in a week are like, in a day, are like driving from here to Washington DC and back. And our routes in a week are like driving from here to California and back, because we're so spread out with our bus routes. That's the amount of miles that go on our buses. So that's a concern that we have. The other category includes student insurance, liability insurance, a variety of other things that come into play, and you can see it's about 2.9%. So those are numbers that would look at, a budgetary number that would maintain the program that we currently have, looking at some transportation increases, and then the blue numbers represent the percent of the actual budget that goes up. So I did this last year just to kind of show you how the impact of the tax cap, as well as the reduction on the revenue of state aid. But if you took the levy of the 2012, 2013 levy, added the state aid number, the governor's number, other revenue that comes from federal, mainly federal grants, tuition from Puntin, it'd come up with 17.9 million. You could then add, if we went to the max of the 2% formula, another 642,000, that'd be where 2% equals 6%, which would give us a total budget of a regular majority of 18.6 If you look at the current cap formula, which is the 18.6, which I just went through with you, based on our current spending plan, which is 17.8 million, you're seeing, you would see a $759,000 increase in spending, what we'd be allowed to do under the 2% tax cap. However, if you compare that to the preliminary budget, the line I just showed you in terms of maintaining program currently as we are, that increases spending would be 1.7 million for a $19.6 million budget. And you can see the difference between what we would be at in terms of the tax cap number, which is 18.6, versus a rollover budget, the latter of everyone, is about a million dollars in the hole, in terms of, we had to find a million dollars worth of cuts to get to the 6.2% or additional revenue. Now, I want to go back to the pension and health insurance piece. I mentioned before that the pension was a $460,000 increase in spending. The health insurance is $165,000, that totals $625,000. If you look at the top line... If you look at the top line in terms of the difference in spending, under a 2% tax cap piece, we could increase spending by $759,000. But over 600 of that is already taken up in health insurance and in TRS, or retirement payments, which leaves just over $100,000 to everything else. What this shows you is that state aid is not keeping up with the tax cap issue. The fact that, and we're not the only district that's going to be in this situation, the fact that you have $100,000 after taking care of those two items to cover everything else shows you the state is not doing what they're supposed to be doing in terms of funding public education. So I want to kind of expand on that a little bit. First thing is looking at some state and federal aid numbers from prior years, and Mrs. Coss is going to do that.
So this is some analysis that we've been doing for a couple of years to look at our outside revenue sources, basically our state aid and our federal aid. State aid monies are those monies that are given to us by New York State to be used for, generally for your general fund expenditures. The only exception is Mr. McDonald's, is our universal pre-K grant, which has to be reported separately. It can't be included as part of your general fund budget. It has to be considered a special aid, and it's money that has to directly correlate to a universal pre-K expense. So it has to be kept off the books. So the main line in this sheet that I want to talk about to start is actually that line all the way kind of in the middle of the page in pink. And that is what, we've done calculations to consider what we're calling base aid. They call it foundation aid or operating aid. They change the name every year. They take into account some, you know, foundation aid was supposed to be reflective of the campaign for fiscal equity. It was supposed to create fair distribution of state aid associated with student needs and poverty. That figure's been fixed for years, so the formula that they generated to respond to the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit really hasn't moved forward. They also have categorical aids like building aid, which are strictly associated with capital projects. So we did take those things out to just show, here's your base aid to run your day-to-day efforts. If you look, in '08, '09, we were receiving almost $800,000 more than we are today. If you look at any of our factors associated with just main pieces of our budget, taking into account pension, taking into account health insurance, I mean, we've been very fortunate that we were able to negotiate to a different plan. We've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in the district since we moved to that plan, but we haven't saved $800,000 a year. And that's compounded year after year. You'll see it's moved up and down, but over the last four years, it's been approximately $700,000 to $800,000 less aid. The other thing that's important to keep in mind is state aid is what is reflective of money being available to support your operating budget. But we also have other programs that are supported through federal grants. Take into account that in '08, '09, we were receiving more than $1.2 million. To be fair, almost $500,000 of that was an after-school program grant that we used to run. It was very successful. It was a coordinated effort from Mariah Crown Point and Taika N'rogah. Ran for our middle school population, and we saw great success with that in terms of student discipline, academic success, student attendance. Unfortunately, when we applied again, we lost that grant. Also, we had a fresh fruits and vegetable grant in '09, '10. Again, it was a great grant. It was written by various teachers in our district. It was used to provide our elementary students with a daily fresh fruit or vegetable snack. They were exposed to foods that they've never, many of them had never heard of, never seen, tried and realized they really liked. We got it for one year and then it was gone. So over the years, we've had opportunities to implement some great programs, but the funding associated with them has dried up very quickly. There was also stimulus grants through '09, '10, and '11 to help support some programs, but since that time, those have diminished as well. So at this point, for our current school year, we receive approximately $595,000 in state and federal grants. Mr. Bartlett?
Any idea what the potential sequestration could entail?
Oh, you're still 102. $27,000 we're expected to lose. 27,000, yep. So not only have we seen this drastic of a hit, but we're looking at a potential of additional $27,000 in cuts just from the sequestration. Excuse me. Okay, thank you. Basically, from all the federal cuts that are supposed to take place Friday. So right after that, we're going to lose approximately 27,000 in addition from our federal funding source. Right now, that would impact either our IDA students, meaning our special ed students receiving special services. Those students and those grants were supposed to support 80 to 90%, I believe, of the funding needs. They're not even close. The Title I grant, which you'll see, has dropped from 434,000 to 319,000 this year. Is our grant is supposed to support our adverse students and to really support early intervention in terms of reading and math. So those are some areas that are seriously in jeopardy.
What I'd like you to take from this is, if you just go back to '08, '09 numbers, and as Mrs. Cossy said, take out the after-school program grant because that was a great program, but really can't count it in terms of renewable aid. So you take that $500,000 out, there's still $700,000 in the three other areas, Title I, IDA, and you'd be getting... So if you take that across, that's over $100,000 in federal aid that we're not getting. That's not part of any specific program. And if you take the state aid, the base aid, you're talking about $800,000. You add those two numbers together, we are no longer at a 1.1 million deficit in terms of our budget situation. This is without even increasing aid from those years. If we didn't have, if the '08, '09 numbers just stayed the same, didn't get an incremental increase, we'd be in good shape. So that's the first point I'd like you guys to take from this meeting. The second thing I'd like to talk about is combined wealth ratio. Combined wealth ratio is a system the state uses to try to equalize the state aid coming across district to district. Your state aid is generated by a combination of your property value and your poverty rates. And then they try to equalize any inequities in the state aid formula through the combined wealth ratio. So if a district is wealthier than they appear to be, they try to equate to that, and either they'll take money away or add money. The state aid, if you have a state, combined wealth ratio of one, then you're the average. If you're above one, then you're considered wealthy, wealthier than the average. How high above one is depending on how wealthy. And if you're below one, then you're considered poorer than the average. So that's the definition of it. I'm not going to read it to you, but basically it is, one is the average, above one, you're wealthy, below one, you're not. Now, Buffalo Business Review ranked 430 school districts, basically in upstate, western New York, upstate, probably, I don't think many, they kept Westchester County out of it, but you're talking about 430 school districts that are very similar in demographics and neighborhood. Takes out New York City, takes out Long Island, takes out Westchester and those areas. Take down N'rogah, according to that, ranked 109th out of 430, meaning that we are the 109th most affluent district out of those 430, and that 300 and something are less wealthy than we are. So let's take a look at this list. I pulled up the list, and I gave you the first five in the kind of red color, the top five, the most, the richest, the top five, the most affluent. And if you look at some of these names, they're not going to surprise you. I'm not picking on anybody. This is public information. You can pull it off the website from that. You'll see, when we get back to that slide, you can see if you want to go check this out yourself. But if you look at the concept of how they rank them, and so the first is the ranking in the district, the number of students. Next is the percent of free and reduced lunch rates for those districts. Pittsburgh, the 3.8 free and reduced lunch rate. The poverty index is youth better living in a household that is below the poverty line. So it's not lunch, it's average family income in that household. And so in these districts, you have, in these top five districts, you can see no less than three, but no more than six in terms of free reduced lunch rate. And no less than three, but no more than seven in terms of children living in a household below the poverty level. And then these districts are also, when you look at their, somehow, when you look at their property values with these numbers, they're considered wealthier than most schools, and they have a combined wealth ratio above one, as high as 1.3, as low as 1.04. And then two and three of our neighbors, I picked the south because they're, in terms of our property values, they probably are a little closer. And where they fall, once again, not trying to pick on anybody, but I'm just trying to tell a story. Lake George is 21, Lake Placid 33, Hadler's Urn 92. If you look at their poverty rates, 16.7, 17.9, 36.74, a little closer to Taika N'rogah. Now, you look at their, children of poverty, a little higher than the top five, and you look at their combined wealth ratio, they're greatly impacted by their property values. But they're still not out of that because they do have fairly low free and reduced lunch rates. Hadler's Urn actually is up to 36 on their free and reduced rate, but the state is starting to compensate them on the other side because they're below the one. Now, you see Taika N'rogah, 109, 48.3% poverty level, 16% kids living in poverty, and we are considered wealthy. We are considered above the state average, 1.16. We are considered wealthier in terms of our combined wealth ratio than two or three of the districts that are in the top five. And then, three-way number, 248, Adirondack. It takes from 109 to 248 to find a district that has a poverty rate higher than ours. So every district between 109 to 248 has a higher freedom, has a lower free and reduced lunch rate than Taika N'rogah. And Adirondack is just one percentage point higher than ours, so in terms of our demographics, very similar. But if you look at the combined wealth ratio, it's way less than one, and they're being compensated on the other end. So the point, I just knew Mariah in there is our neighbor to the north. They are the lowest in terms of area schools here. And you can see their free and reduced lunch rate significantly higher than ours, as well as their kids living in a household poverty. But they are also being at a .373 in terms of the combined wealth ratio. So they're being compensated on that. This slide tells you that the combined wealth ratio is a problem. There are only three districts of the 430 that have a combined wealth ratio of 48 or higher, or I'm sorry, have a poverty rate of 48 or higher and a combined wealth ratio over one were outliers on that. There are only seven districts on that list of 430 that have a poverty rate of 40% and combined wealth ratio of over one. So those seven districts, in my opinion, are being adversely affected by the state Another part of this, we have as part of our, there are two areas in terms of our assessments that I'd like to think about. So that, the combined wealth ratio piece is my second talking point. The third is exemptions. In our assessed value, a billion dollars of assessed value, we have properties that are exempt from taxation, some very legitimate, for example, volunteer fire department. Now, I'm not saying any of them aren't legitimate, but it's 15% of our total Taika N'rogah aid assessed value is exempt from taxes. However, it still counts in the combined wealth ratio. Even though we do generate zero revenue from those 15% of those properties, they are counted in terms of are we a wealthy school district in terms of our property value? And so they are impacting where we stand with our combined wealth ratio. And this includes churches and historic areas and things like that, all legitimate. But it's unfair that if we can't generate revenue from them, why are they counted in terms of our assessed value through the combined wealth ratio? The next talking point is our state land assessment. We have assessed value in the district that the state owns, and they do pay taxes on it. However, I'll give you an example of one of those properties. The Rogers Rock Campsite is assessed at $10 million. That includes the entire lakefront, all the property on the other side of Route 9. And I submit to you that the people that use Rogers Rock Campsite are using the lake in the same way that any person who owns property on that lake. However, per square foot, they are not being assessed in a similar way. So once again, we are being impacted by that piece. The last piece I'd like to talk, talking point is Adirondack Park. We know about state land and the state garment or farming land within the park, taking it off the tax rails, that's one problem. The other problem of being in the park is the regulations that are associated with being in the park prohibit economic growth. So when you take these five talking points together, and really in terms of talking to our legislators, it's two through, two through five, we are hit negatively in every one of those areas. If you go, not that you need to do it, but if you go back to that list of 430 schools, there is not one school in those 430 that gets hammered on every one of those points except Taika N'rogah. So it shows the unique situation that we have here because of where we are, because of the state fund that does not work, because of stating that has not kept up with our students' needs, and because of a state that has not assessed its own property the same way they expect everyone else to assess. So what are our next steps? We know we have a million-dollar gap. We're going to continue to look at our expenses. We've got a K-12 scheduling committee that's, we're going to be putting together. We've done the skeleton of that, and we'd like to get our teachers involved in that to look at. People say K-12 is a unique thing. And we'll let you, tell you that for the past 10 years, we've been operating as a district with three different buildings. We're trying to get away from that model, and we're trying to look at, because of our reduction enrollment, we're small enough where we can talk K-12, not only in terms of kids, but in terms of schedule. So that will impact what staffing needs we have and could impact, obviously, impact our expenses. We've got to continue our community outreach. Our next budget workshop is here on March 19th at 7:00. And then we will be having, prior to that, a budget advisory committee. We haven't announced that yet. We don't have the time yet. To be honest with you, the audit has taken up so much of our time, we've missed a couple. We had to actually schedule some meetings just to get the order out of our hair. We're going to do coordinated lobbying efforts. We've already started what's called an Amor High Initiative Resolution. We've already started what's called an aderite initiative resolution. We drafted a resolution that our board adopted. We're the first board to adopt it that outlines the unique situation that we have in the Adirondack Park. The rationale is that, let's call the park what it is. It's a playground for the rest of the state. Let's embrace that. We're not going to change the regulations. We're not going to be able to bring back manufacturing to this park. We, let's, let's call it what it is. We know the state's acquiring land, and we know the purpose of it. In fact, the governor wants to have a whitewater rafting race in the park. I mean, he's talked about these kinds of things. Okay, let's buy into that. Let's get on board with that. But if that's the reality on one side, there's a reality on the other side, and that means that for this reality to take place, it significantly prohibits or slows down a building, a community's town, schools' ability to grow their tax base because of the regulations that are part of that. So, the resolution asks the state to create a special school aid fund for districts that are in the Adirondack Park because of this, to compensate them for what they can't get that other areas can. We've had over 20 districts sign on to the resolution already. I think five or six towns have bought in. We've got some counties that are talking about it. We're going to figure out how to present this publicly through the press, not in an advers, an adversarial way because we want folks to embrace the concept and not just sound like we're crying about something. We need help. We were able to get this to the Secretary of State, and so it has been at least on the second floor. I don't know if everybody on the second floor of the Capitol looked at it, but which is the governor's office. So, at least it's there somewhere, which is, which is something that hasn't happened in the past. So, that's something we're continuing to work on in terms of lobbying. And Betty Little is on board with it to this point. We talked, had meetings, actually with Mr. Wiley, and his organization in support. A white paper on the concept of changing the state aid formula. He's articulated very well the concerns that I kind of brought up just now, basically looking at that. We have a poverty rate that is, a combined wealth ratio that is three times higher than our poverty rate. And it shows the same story that I'm talking about. And if we work together and we talk to our representatives, a united front, I think we'll get a lot further than we have in the past. And then finally, we're going to continue to hammer the mandates and the mandate relief piece, which right, to this point, the state really has done nothing on those things. So, those are our next steps. At this point, I guess I'll go up for any questions. Mr. Burr.
You've already pointed out how the combined wealth ratio doesn't work. I have a question on the tax cap. I think that pension exemption isn't working for us either because the total increase is $460,000, but yet the exemption, the allowable amount into the tax cap is only $140,000, $148,000. And I thought the concept was that you were supposed, because it's mandated, it's beyond the district's control, that anything over 2 percent, you were supposed to get an exemption for. According to those numbers, we're not.
No. And the understanding when they were discussing the exemption is exactly what you were, what you were stating. The reality of how they have interpreted that language is they have stated anything above the 2 percent increase in the rate. So, for instance, last year, we actually received a small exemption on our ERS contributions because there were just, there was a rate increase of larger than 2 percent. This year, there is no exception for ERS contributions because the rate is not going up more than 2 percent, meaning two percentage points, even though the total rate increase, I believe, was 11 percent. But because it's going up less than two percentage points, there's no exception. So, meaning we would have had to, this year, we're going up to 20.9. If our contributions had been less than 18.9 percent last year, then we would be eligible for the exception. So, for instance, TRS this year, we are eligible for the exception because we are going from 11.84 to 16.25. So, the difference between the 16.25 and 13.84 times your total salaries is the amount that's exempt.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
I would just say this, though. I've never been very good with numbers, but that's nonsensical.
You are good with numbers.
I mean, I mean, we're getting squeezed big time on that, on that factor. And don't let anybody normally kid us about it. I mean, it's just crazy.
Other questions?
John, there's hard questions. So, is that all on the website?
Hard questions is on the website, yes.
All listed, you saw.
This will be on the website. Trying to save paper. We made paper copies. Sorry about that. But if you like a paper copy, we can get you one, but it will be on the website tomorrow. So, you know, just have at it. And the resolution's on the website. I don't have a list of schools that have mounted on the website yet, but just trying to coordinate what's the best way to present this. I talked about the Secretary of State, fortunate that the Deputy Secretary was in Taiconoroga, not in Alano. And I was able to pull her aside. Oh, thought is, maybe if we think, maybe if they take it, look at it, and they think it's their idea, they'll act on it. That's fine with me. So, that's kind of the concept that I soft-shoed a little bit with them, and they look at it. And actually, I will tell you, I got a call back. This was a Thursday meeting. I got a call back on Friday from the second floor. They're heading to a meeting with the governor, and they wanted more information. So, that's encouraging. That's never happened before. I don't know where it's going to go, but you know, at least there's something out there. Other questions? So, what I would recommend is that take those, when this gets on the website, take a look at those talking points. And we really need to hammer those points home to our, to our legislators and anybody that would listen because any one district's going to get hit by one or two of these things. But I think we're the only one that gets hit by all of them, and something needs to be done about that.
Go on to seven recommended actions for four minutes in financial items. One, A, recommended motion that the Board of Education make any necessary corrections and approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on January 15th, 2013. And B, acknowledge the receipt of the monthly financial reports. And C, acknowledge the receipt of the scheduled bills for payment. And D, acknowledge the receipt of the extra classroom activity fund report for December dated February 13th, 2013, and the report for January dated February 13th, 2013. And you have an enclosure on that. Let's do a motion on item seven.
So, a motion.
Second.
All favor? Oppose? B, personnel. One, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of John Landry as a bus driver effective February 28th, 2013, pending successful completion of his probationary appointment. Two, A, recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Anne Maholic as account clerk and approve her probationary appointment as senior account clerk and records access officer at a prorated annual salary of $28,500 effective January 1st, 2013. And B, accept her resignation as deputy treasurer and approve her probationary appointment as treasurer effective January 1st, 2013. And there's an enclosure on that. Three, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve an unpaid leave of absence for Wendy Shaw as a senior typist receptionist effective from December 1st, 2012 through February 8th, 2013, with her return to work on Monday, February 11th, 2013, under the Family and Medical Leave Act. There's an enclosure on that. Four, recommended motion that the Board of Education continue additionally approve the following substitutes for the 2012, 2013 school year pending fingerprinting and approval by the State Education Department. Anne Morat, uncertified teacher, teaching assistant, and teacher aide, middle and high school only. And W. Tavish Costello, uncertified teacher, teaching assistant, and teacher aide. There's an enclosure on that. So, B, personnel, please, and lead a motion on those.
Second. Just, Ms. Raymond retired this lake, this lakefall, okay? And as we mentioned, we did replace that position, we moved people around, and Ms. Maholic is now taking back those duties. We were fortunate to get Mrs. Shaw back, Ms. Shaw back on February 11th, so that's helped in terms of redistributing the duties that belong in that office. That's, that was the other questions.
Other questions for the board? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. C, new business, the accepted donation from the Northern Lake George Rotary Club. One, recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the donation of $500 from the Northern Lake George Rotary Club towards music instruments for the Taiconoroga Central School District effective February 26th, 2013.
They've always been very generous, and this is something that happens continually from them. And once again, I really appreciate all the support, not just from the Rotary, but all the other groups, particularly given our tough economic times. We'll generate a thank you.
Thank you. And then D, new business, recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education. One, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following recommendations from the first, excuse me, January 14th, 2013 through the 7th of February, 2013. Those are listed, listed there on that table. I need a motion on C and D, please.
Second.
All favor? Oppose? Motion's carried. We'll go to eight informational items, reports.
I think you've heard pretty much enough from me tonight, but there are little activity reports in all three buildings. One thing I will comment on, we did talk to our teachers yesterday about snore day givebacks. We determined that unless there's incremental weather coming forward, although it sounds like tonight, we don't know, March 8th, March 15th, it'll be long weekends in March. The teachers are adamant that to stay away from the April vacation because of the proximity that vacation has to testing. The rest will be given back in May. There are a couple of AP fanatics, AP teachers that are fanatics, and they'd like us to give them back after the AP exam if at all possible. So, the rest will be given back in May, either attached to the Memorial Day vacation and another long weekend, depending, depending on when you use between now.
We had a transportation report. There was an enclosure on that. And also a technology department report. There was an enclosure on that item. Mr. Alkon, it's out.
He's had a specialist training.
So, that's, he's there, recertification. It's better him than I. And so, we have an enclosure on the operations of Mr. Al. So, and here we have on C, the future items. As you can see, those are listed. The one item that I do call attention to are the merger studies. March 2nd, excuse me, March 6th, 2013, at the, here in the Taiconoroga High School's booth cafeteria. There's a tour at 5:45, and the meeting is at 6:30 PM. And there's another one in April, April 17th, and that one is going to be in Crown Point at 6:30. So, I encourage attendance to those, understanding that these are public meetings. But we encourage you to come and listen and hear what has been.
Actually, I should, this part of my report, I probably should have updated folks on that. But all the merger stuff sits down on the website. First meeting was at Crown Point. The first actual committee meeting was at Crown Point. And they did, they did an overview for the committee because a lot of them hadn't seen the process before, which was very well received. Then they talked about enrollment for transgraze district and the combined district. And this interesting fact that in a merged district, the enrollment would be about 1,100 students, which is what our enrollment was back in 2000. So, just an interesting tidbit there. The next meeting, March 6th, is here. It'll be a tour of the high school first, then the meeting, and the topic is program. If those folks who attended the enrollment meeting thought, well, I didn't really get a lot out of it. There wasn't a lot going on, a big part of that meeting was to orientate the committee. On the 6th, they're going to really be going to work. So, it'll be interesting to look at both programs and what opportunities there are for students right now in each district and then what they would look like in other districts. As you said, the more the merrier in terms of attendance.
All the other, other future items are also listed there. I'm going to read them all. You're welcome to look on the website or get a copy through email distribution. So, with that, we'll have any other public participation, anything anyone would like to bring up for the board. We're going to have adjournments. So, we need a motion, please, to adjourn. Second. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried. Folks, thanks for coming.